Well, hi, everybody. Welcome to the November 4th Planning Commission meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gutierrez is absent tonight. Commissioner Marsters?
Present.
Commissioner Bergman?
Present.
Vice Chair Silberman?
Present.
Chair Harper-Peterson?
Present. Thank you. Okay, public comment. A public comment is listed, is limited to items that are not on the posted agenda. Is anybody here tonight to talk about items not on the posted agenda? Okay, seeing nobody, we're going to go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. And as you can see in the agenda, we are actually going to be pushing that to the November 18th meeting. Okay? So, the next item on our agenda is our public hearing. And since many people out there are new to public hearings, I'm going to go ahead and go through the procedure quickly. First, the staff will present a report on, on the project, the features, the history, and the like. Then the applicant, then the staff will present its recommendations. After that, the applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, members of the community can come up and speak at the microphone on the proposal. When all interested parties have spoken, there will be no further comment from the floor. At that point, the commissioners will deliberate and make our recommendation. If you do challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those items you or somebody else has raised during public hearing or in written correspondence to the city. Please fill out a speaker's form if you're interested in speaking. And please come up to the microphone when you are interested in speaking. This will help the staff prepare the minutes. Thank you. And the first item on our agenda is 934 Laurel Street. And I understand that staff has an update for us.
Yes, thank you, Chair Pedersen and Commissioners. Good evening. Just this morning, staff discovered that there was an error in the noticing requirements for the proposed project at 934 Laurel Street. And our ordinance is, our ordinance requires that we notify all property owners within 300, within a 300-foot radius from the project site. We discovered this morning by an email from a neighbor who said he did not receive a notification. Staff checked the noticing that went out, and there were a couple of other addresses that also did not receive notification of this public hearing. And as such, we are recommending, or we're going to need to have to continue the item to November 18th. So, staff will reissue a notice to the community and double-check the address labels, that all address labels are indeed on that list. And we apologize for the inconvenience, both to the applicant and to any neighbors who may have come out tonight for this hearing. But because our ordinance is, ordinance requires that we fulfill our public notice requirement, we have to postpone the public hearing to November 18th. And so, if we could get a motion from the commission to table it to a date certain, which is November 18th, then we'd be happy to bring that back.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion?
Yes. I move to continue the application from 934 Laurel Street to be continued to the November 18th meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. The next item on the agenda is 147 Coronado Avenue. And that is a consideration of a request for design review approval and grading and dirt haul permit issuance. Gavin?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Gavin Monahan, and I will be taking you through the application for a proposed new home at 147 Coronado Avenue. The request tonight is for a design review approval and also the request for a grading and dirt haul approval certificate. This home is in front of the Planning Commission because the San Carlos Municipal Code states that when there is grading in excess of 1,000 cubic yards, it is the purview for review and approval of the Planning Commission, not the Residential Design Review Committee. As we have been doing it over the past few years, we took this application to the Designer Review Committee, to the RDRC, for a study session, which, in order to get neighborhood feedback and also provide a forum for those types of comments that neighbors have traditionally expected through the RDRC. So, that was completed in September 16th of this year. Comments from that meeting are included in the minutes from RDRC, which were attached to the staff report. Several individuals spoke. We also received some correspondence via email and telephone counter-visits, and those have been incorporated into the staff report. And also, staff has responded where, where staff could respond to the project questions that the neighbors had as a result of that meeting and also as a result of the public notice and the outreach the applicant has done. So, that brings us to this evening. The request is for a new home. It's a single-family residence. It's located in a hillside location at 147 Coronado. This is the aerial view of the site. It's outlined. If you went by the site, you would notice that just next to it, at 151 Coronado, there is currently significant grading underway for a new home that was approved in September of 2011, so it's a little bit over two years ago. They're similar-sized homes. This is actually a slightly smaller lot, but the two homes are similar in that they're multi-level and they're in a hillside location with the upslope, which creates a lot more challenge with grading. The downslope homes are built on piers with a ramp into their garage. The upsloping homes have to have significant grading completed in order to get them into the hillside, to comply with our maximum height requirements and also just to make them physically stable in their location. So, for this request, it's a multi-level home. It's on a 7,750-square-foot lot. It is zoned, single-family, RS6. That's our standard residential zoning designation. And the general plan designation is single-family. The lot in question is just, just to the left here. So, the, you'll see the homes here on the downslope of Coronado are built out. The next street up is Elston Court. And then, in this particular location, there are actually three lots. There's a lot with a 170X address. There's 151 and 147. So, there's three undeveloped lots in this location. So, the project description is for a new home, as I described. It has a lower-level basement, which includes a garage. We use the Building Code, the UBC definition of a basement, for the termination of that floor. That houses circulation staircase, an elevator in the back, storage, and the mandatory two-car garage. The garage you'll see in the plans is pushed up in the hillside overlay. We allow garages to be within five feet of the property line. It's necessary for grading. If you push the garage back the full 20 feet, you get a significant increase in the amount of grading and off-haul that's required. So, in this case, the garage is forward. Similar to other homes on the street, many of the homes have a garage door that's at or near the property line. And so, this is not dissimilar to those homes. The first floor, each floor is around 1,200 square feet. And the first, second, and third floor contain the living space. The lower level is the garage and circulation. Much of this home, and I can have the applicant speak to this, much of this home is actually below grade. So, the numbers you see of the, of the total square footage for the house, probably more than 50% of the house is actually below grade. And we can see that in some of the elevations that I'll show in, in the upcoming slides. There is a comprehensive landscaping plan that's proposed for the home. It is required. There are seven heritage-sized trees that are on the lot of that, at least, at this point, four of them have to come out. So, there's, there is the proposal to replace those four trees with three native oaks. Those are in our, our 24-inch box-size dimension, which we require. And there's an additional seven trees that are going in with an ordinance-size replacement. The oaks that can be retained on-site will be retained, and we'll have a requirement for screening and protection for the root zone and the canopy is practicable for the location. So, I'm going to take you first just through the elevation pictures. This is the front elevation of the house. It's this modern design. We're seeing a lot of these. We just had a similar house in RDRC earlier this evening, and we have many applications over the last two or three years. There's a lot of emphasis on cubes, differences of materials. So, you'll see stone. You'll see horizontal cedar siding. You'll see a smooth stucco, oftentimes with an integrated color coat. And the idea is that you break up the cubes with a comprehensive scheme of textures and colors that work to create visual interest, basically, out of the rectilinear designs. The garage in the lower level, you'll see it has two levels of flat top. This is just the schematic of the actual line art. That garage section has, in the header between the top of the garage door and that, is an area for ground, for earth. So, it'll be backfilled. So, when the landscaping plan goes in, the house will be landscaped from the right property line to the left property line, including that swath right above the garage door and just proud of that balcony for the sliding glass doors on the first level. The idea behind this, it's similar to the home that's being constructed next door, is to break up the house. So, you see a three-story element of a house, and then detach from that is the entrance to a two-car garage. It's necessary on the hillsides to, to get multiple levels in order to even have enough living space, because so much of these homes are dedicated to circulation. You'll see in the site plan, so much of it's dedicated to staircases, light wells, and other access to the different floors. So, that's a visual representation of the front. This is a picture of the landscaping plan. And you can see here, I'm just going to bring the cursor. This is the section here that's landscaped. It's approximately, I think it's six to eight feet here. And this will be landscaped really above the garage. So, when you see it from the street, you'll see a lower garage door and then the house above it. The lot under construction is right here. This is the lot at 151. It's a slightly wider lot. The homes that are back here are on Elston Court. So, the addresses are anyone that comments from Elston Court or the homes that are above it, just to give you a little perspective of the location.
But if you're fa, I'm sorry, if you're, can I, I can ask a question, right?
Yeah.
So, if you're facing the house, you're saying 151?
Is to the right, yes.
On the right?
Yeah, this is the, this is the garage entrance. This is the garage door. And the home being constructed is right here, so.
Wow, all right. I'm sorry, it's very hard for me to envision where this house is going. But, go ahead.
The right elevation gives you a perspective of the percent of the house that's below grade. This is the garage here. This is the entrance here. And there's internal circulation that will take you up inside of the house here. And then, when completed, the landscaping here will fill in. So, you'll have the house and the garage visually detached. And then, this is the left elevation. So, the right elevation is this elevation that faces the home that's under construction. And the left elevation faces a built-out neighborhood. There's a schematic site section here. This shows some representation of the house as it fits into the hillside. This structure here is an elevator shaft, just for reference. It needs to be in that location of the house to service the floors that it reaches above with the garage here. And then, the dark areas show the backfill. In this case, it's backfill here. This will be just remaining, earth not to be removed. The representation here shows the house on Elston Court with some representative elevations. As with all hillside development, there's concerns with sightlines, view impacts, things of that nature. It's very common. So, we did a similar, had requested a similar drawing from the applicants next door. We did the same for this particular project to show how the house tucks into the hillside, not sitting up on top of the hill, but really flush into the hillside. The dotted line here are, is the maximum height require, allowed, which is the 28, 28 feet at any given place. And that's measured to grade below, which is defined in the Building Code as either the property line or five feet out from the structure. So, that's why you see these dimensions that are five or greater feet away from the structure. So, as I mentioned, we did, the city did conduct outreach, and we did receive letters and comments from neighbors. You can imagine, many of the comments are concerned around the grading and impacts to the street. It is a very narrow street. Construction on, on Coronado is difficult and tough. Those are the only ways to describe it. So, the, the challenge is how to condition the project so that the grading work can be as least impactful to the neighbors and yet still achieve the project that the applicants are seeking. So, that's one thing that we had discussions with majority of anyone that had a comment about, the impacts that they might face. There are also some impacts to just the general condition of Coronado, the street. There are some cracks in it and settling and paving. I try to direct those comments en masse to, en masse to the Public Works Department. I know that they will prioritize streets based on the conditions, and those conditions are only brought to light when residents bring it up. So, those are some of the main comments that we had. There's also comments about construction hours. The home on the right, 151, was approved under an older ordinance, under older zoning code. So, we actually referenced a previous, a previous approval through a planned community and used some of the construction times that were found in that ordinance. So, for the grading and dirt haul on this home, we have mirrored those times so that you won't have construction occurring at side-by-side homes with different parameters of when it's allowed and when it's not allowed. So, that's one thing that you'll find. We do not have the construction hours. We have the grading and dirt haul hours in the grading and dirt haul approval certificate and the code compliance certificate. We don't have the construction hours, because as of Friday evening, when I left the office, the applicant and one of the neighbors were still coming to an agreement on what they thought was an appropriate time. Since that time, one of the neighbors has emailed recommended hours that are in a set of three emails that I have left for you on the dais tonight. So, it would be our expectation to read the conditions from the, from the previous approval with those construction hours into the record, should you choose to approve the project tonight. So, the two homes will have, will mirror each other in construction start times, grading and dirt haul times, make it easier for our building department, and also much clearer to understand for the neighbors that are, may have concerns about the ongoing construction on the street. And I'll let the applicant, there's an applicant here tonight, as is the neighbor, that we're working together on those hours. And they are more restricted than the city's hours. So, it would be something that they are going to recommend, and we can certainly agree to and then approve and codify in the approval document, being more restrictive than what's normally required in San Carlos. There are a variety of required findings. They're really broken into the two categories. There's the design review findings that are required, and they're under the same chapter as they are when it goes to RDRC, Section 1829-060, which are the design review criteria, that the proposal is consistent with the applicable standards and requirements of this title, which includes all the numerical things, height, setback, lot coverage, and the maximums and minimums that we require. The second is that the proposal is consistent with the general plan and applicable specific plans that the city council has adopted. We did include some relevant general plan policies in the staff report. This project supports the general plan specifically from this project. The third is that the proposal is consistent with the applicable designer review criteria in Section 1829-060, designer review criteria. And the final one is that the proposed grading would not adversely affect drainage, lateral support, or other properties in the area, and it's consistent with the general plan and the municipal code. It would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. So, those are the required findings for the project. So, there's two different approvals. There's the code compliance certificate, which covers the house, the structure, the design, the architecture. It's the, it's the vehicle, the approval vehicle that we use in the Planning Commission that we, is very similar to what we have in, in the Residential Designer Review Committee. And then, there's a grading and dirt haul approval certificate, and that is the approval for the grading work and the off-haul. So, the off-haul goes from the site on Coronado through residential streets until it reaches an arterial, then it travels through the arterials out of the city. So, there is a specified grading route that's created by the Public Works Director, by our Public Works staff, and they have included that, have presented that to, to planning staff, and we've included that in the staff report. So, the residents that are along the collector streets, up until the arterials, are all noticed. And this is a little bit different, because some of the trucks from Public Works go down Elm Street, so it gets re-noticed, because it becomes a non-arterial street. So, that list is, and also is, is an attachment in your staff report. And you'll see, there's about four and a half pages of, of addresses that we noticed for the, for the off-haul, for the grading route. I haven't spent a lot of time on the architecture purposely. I wanted to kind of cover the highlights of the project and also discuss some of the concerns that the neighbors have. I'm probably quite certain I have not covered every single complaint or concern that the neighbors have. So, I would like to have plenty of time in the forum for them to speak, speak up and share those things, so we can address them. There are a variety of things that the applicant has done with the neighbors, as far as outreach and working as closely as he can with the surrounding neighbors. It is a tight-knit community. There's probably a half a dozen homes that are very much impacted, and then a couple dozen that are also impacted in sort of a larger radius from the site. So, I would let him speak to that. Also, there, the, his team of the designer and the engineer are also present tonight, and I will have them speak to the design of the house. If you have questions and concerns about how they build on the hillside, they're also quite familiar with the house next door, which is going, I think, quite well. They've hit quite a bit of bedrock, so they've slowed down in their grading. But if you were by there, you'll see that they've made significant progress in the removal of the hillside for that particular house. So, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the findings and recommend approval to allow the constriction of the, construction of the new home and also the approval of the dirt hauling permit, which includes 2,799 cubic yards of off-haul. So, it's all being removed and off-hauled. Sometimes you'll see a site where some of it's filled, but in this case, it would be removed and trucked from the site. And I am available for questions if you have questions for me. And as I mentioned, there are a variety of residents, neighbors, and also the applicant here tonight.
Thank you, Gavin. Does anybody have any questions specifically for Gavin at this point?
Super quick one?
Yeah.
Why does the dirt hauling permit, why does it not allow any work between October 1st and April 15th?
It's part of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is the federal government's enforcement of the Clean Water Act. So, it's the thought that those periods of time are most likely in a rainy season. So, they restrict the grading work to periods that are outside of that winter period, and it's just, they're associated to off-haul, the grading. They can grade into October and November on a daily basis with permission from the Public Works Department. So, if you have, starting in October, if you have sunny days for the next month, they can get a day-by-day permission to do grading work.
Good question. I have one.
Yes. As far as some of the, well, a couple of the homeowners have mentioned a view survey, and you showed a picture up there that had pretty much what the line of sight was and impact of view. Is it the reason that that hasn't been done is because it's obvious that it's not a large impact, if any, impact on the view? Or, I'm trying to get a sense of if we required some homeowners to do it and not others, why?
We have, we actually, I've, I've been in San Carlos for five and a half years, and I've only worked on two that had this particular level of, of view diagram, and that's 147 and 151 Coronado. So, it's not a requirement in our code, but applicants can certainly give us, go beyond what we mandatorily require for a submittal package to be complete for additional things that would help get their project through the planning improvement and entitlement process. So, I think something like this helps to show visually the way the houses on the hillsides work.
So, is this accurate?
Is it accurate? I mean, it's, we did not send it out for third-party review. We have not done that in the past. There are certainly firms that could do that. If that was a request of the Planning Commission, then they would use a transit in existing numerical data to come up with some relevant points to see if what's being shown there is an accurate representation of what's actually on the ground.
Did you have a follow-up to that, Scott?
The reason I ask is I actually took and drew the line from the line of sight to the edge of the property there. And you actually, in, according to this diagram, you will not be able to see this building from the house that sits on top of the hill. And I'm just trying to figure out if that's accurate or not.
I think that's the intention. The house next door, which has some similar numerical parameters and is very close by, it sits below, the top of the roof sits below, several feet below, the lowest part of grade at the lot above it. So, if you then add five feet for an average person's view, it's seven or 10 feet above the lowest point of the roof, the highest point of the roof, excuse me. So, that's the intent is to show on the hillside. We don't have a view ordinance, though. So, what we work around are the, the general plan's policy of not adversely impacting significant views, which are really defined as public views. If you read the description of it, it's really talking about public vista. So, if there had been a park on Elston Court or some other public amenity, that a new, new construction would block it. That's really what the, our municipal code speaks to, are the impacts of, of those significant public vistas. It doesn't in the, down in the weeds with the zoning code, it does not talk about protecting individual homes' views, right, left, or center. But we certainly, having said that, our intent is that the new construction impacts existing neighborhood as, as little as practicable. So, that's what we're working towards. There's never no impact. That's why I preface this with, the street is a challenge. It's narrow and difficult. That's the best way to describe it. But then, going forward from there, what are the best ways to approve, condition, and then oversee the construction of these projects that are, that are challenging?
Gavin, since you have this picture up, can you just clarify for me where the bottom of the 28-foot?
Sure.
Where we start to measure 28 feet as far as the height limit?
So, the backfill sections here, based on the Building Code, would be great, because they have to be either at the property line. So, a home that's two or three feet from the property line, that would mean at the property line, two or three feet, or five feet away. That keeps a person from building a retaining wall that's only six inches thick and saying, "I'm measuring to the top of my retaining wall." So, in this case, the dotted line here, and let me bring the cursor up, the dotted line here is 28 feet. It's actually, they didn't draw a straight line, but they're showing, because they have a flat roof. So, at this point, from what would be, and there's no grade here, because you're seeing a cross-section that's sliced away. From the grade line here up to the top of this dotted line would be 28 feet. And they're showing the house here to be, I don't have, can't put a scale on it, but four feet underneath the maximum.
I see.
Sometimes you'll see it represented as a diagonal line. It's probably easier to read. They'll just draw a diagonal line off the 28, and then you can see everything falls underneath it.
Okay. Thank you. And then, one other concern, or one other question. I know that there, there are concerns about safety and the conditions on Coronado Avenue. What would the neighbor's best recourse be if there were some significant potholes or some significant damage to Coronado? Would they go to Public Works?
So, that's a great question. The applicant is responsible for maintaining and returning better-than-found the conditions of the street that they are adjacent to. So, when they make their sewer connection, the street repair needs to be up to the standards that the Public Works Department has. And the standards are online. There are city standards for curb, gutter, sidewalk. Each cross-section, there is a city standard. Any damage that was done as a result of the grading and off-haul would be the responsibility of the applicant as well. There was a request that the applicant might be responsibility for resurfacing that whole section of Coronado. And we have not done that in the past. That has not been a requirement. I don't, I don't think there's a nexus there, because prior to the construction start of even the house next door, there were impacts on it. There were, there were issues with Coronado, just like many city streets, or cracks, or sections that need to be filled and leveled and resurfaced. So, but that is something that, before they get their final, the city inspects to make sure that that section in front of the house is, is up to the city standard. And as homes get redone or replaced or remodeled to the extent that that becomes a requirement, sections of streets get upgraded. You'll see it as you drive around town. You'll see a section in front of some of our new buildings, like the salt box, the curb, gutter, sidewalk, infrastructure, everything, the tree wells, all of those things on Laurel Street are at A-plus standard, because that was a requirement of the project. So, for that section in front of the house, that would be a requirement. For genuine, for just ongoing issues with the street, the best way is to contact Public Works. They do keep a log. They prioritize street repairs based on their best expertise. But then, you know, as all things in the city, they, they only know when there's a problem when someone lets them know about it, so.
Great, thank you, Gavin. Are there any other questions for Gavin before we hear from the applicant?
So, this street?
So this street was a concern two years ago when 151 went in. I'm a little surprised that nothing has really been done to this street since it was such a concern even two years ago. And I don't know if there's any way to sort of prioritize this through Public Works. I would encourage the residents out there to make some phone calls to Public Works and make this a priority because for 151, there was the same group or a larger group of residents who came in and really expressed concern about the street and the condition of the street. So if you are really concerned about it, that's something that you can do.
Thank you. Any other questions for Gavin at this point?
Yeah, I have a question generally on what our ordinances allow as far as maintenance hours, because I'm looking at the email from some of the homeowners, and they're stipulating pretty much no work on Saturdays. And I didn't know if that's what our city ordinance was for that.
No, we do actually allow work on weekends.
So this would be, they're asking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And it works both ways. There's a benefit to that because residents have peaceful weekends, and other people argue that projects take longer because they aren't being completed. They only have five days to work. But again, when an applicant and a neighborhood agree on something and they want us to approve the document, and they will come forth voluntarily and propose more restrictive hours, we have generally been supportive of that if it helps with neighborhood well-being.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Gavin at this point? Thank you very much, Gavin. Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Hi, good evening. Jeff Potts, on behalf of Samir Sharma, who is the applicant.
Good evening. Good evening, Misses.
I'll just be very brief and kind of maybe jump around and answer the questions sort of as they were asked and anticipate the questions. But this is a good slide to start with, to answer the question. This is as accurate as we could get without getting on the property above and surveying the exact location of the house, the exact height of the floor of the house above. But the intent, of course, was, you know, there's a, the property for this house actually extends up onto that flat part a ways. There's an easement for the exclusive use of the person above across the property. With the fence there, the intent was that, you know, from their house or even their yard, they wouldn't really be able to view over their fence and see the roof of the house. And so this is, I don't know if I can turn on the cursor here. Oh, that's not what I wanted to do. So they wouldn't be able to see the top corner of this house. When it comes to the height, actually, we started this project under your old ordinance for your hillside, which was much different than your current ordinance. And the house next door on 151 is being constructed under the old ordinance, in which case, the height of the house was measured more as a plane that goes up the hill with the hill. The current ordinance measures the house, actually, the required height is measured up from grade at the front of the house, up a certain distance, and I don't have all these numbers memorized, but, and then back, and then up, and then across. And so this line actually does represent the maximum height slash envelope of the house under your new hillside zoning ordinance. And so it's important to note, we started this house under the old ordinance. We actually completed the design of a vastly different house under the old ordinance, and then it was changed sort of in midstream, and we ended up going back to the drawing board. The old house was much more vertical, as you'll see on 151, and had a pitched roof and obviously was a little more intrusive based on that. Received a copy of this in their packages or not, but this was sort of the last exhibit we put together based on some feedback at the design review meeting. This is the footprint of the house at 147. This is the house at 151. And you can see that the footprint's a little narrower and shallower, and it is because it's more vertical, sort of set into the hill. But you can see based on the design, you know, our intent was to sort of do the best we could to get a house on the site and not impact the views. And so you can see even from the back corner of that house that the view is almost, you know, 90 degrees out of the back corner of that house, and that we're pushed back behind that house for, you know, almost the whole balance of the house so that we're not intruding on the views out that way. The area that shows the garage on that plan, you can see, is actually completely below the grade of the existing hill, as you can see on the section here on the screen. And so that garage will not be really visible to the adjacent house at all. And the first edge that they will be able to see is this corner here, and you can see in the section that we're kind of tucked, you know, back into the hill. So really, the only part of this house that sticks above grade is this kind of wedge here. We're more than 60% below grade. If we were to do a view study, I'm not sure what more we could do to reduce the massing of this house on this site and still get a house that is buildable on the lot. But we have done, you know, the best we could to push the house back into the house and, into the hill, and push it down into the hill at the same time, as you can see from this section. We went to a contemporary style because that helped us get lower, basically, you know, no big roof above, so we went with flat roof railing. Tried to get some balconies, you know, off the front at each level for the views. And then again, as Gavin mentioned, he went through most of this, broke the garage from the house by burying it, and you'll see that there's planter area between, you know, the face of the garage and this first little exterior patio, and then back to the house. So you've got, you know, 15 feet horizontally of planting between the front of the garage and the front of the house with a small patio there. And with that, we're really just here to answer questions and make sure we've addressed all the concerns.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? I just have, I have one. I understand that you've been in conversation with the neighbors about adjusting the construction hours?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Peters, yep. So we met at the design review meeting back in September, and, you know, one of the concerns was the hours that, the grading and the exterior work of the home, what would be going on. And, you know, I asked, we exchanged information, I asked him to write up, you know, a proposal, what he thought was fair and what he would like to see done, based upon very valid arguments. He wanted to have, you know, his children a place to play that's nice for the weekends, you know, to enjoy that without any clutter and crazy noises outside, and it made a lot of sense to me. And, you know, I have no problem with the hours that he's proposed for us to abide by those. I think it's a fair, you know, a fair amount of hours that he's asking. He's even included a little inclusion in there for interior work. We can be working on weekends, which completely makes sense, you know, we're doing painting or interior cabinetry, whatever it may be, that we can be doing, abiding by the city hours. But as far as exterior work, you know, we're not going to be grading anyway probably till first quarter of 2014, hopefully by April, you know, so that's kind of our goal as far as from a process standpoint. The weather won't be an issue. And then if the weather's good, we can get in there and get done quickly.
And just to be clear for the record, we're talking about the hours proposed by Roel Peters?
That's correct.
Great. In the email that was given to us. Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant?
So you're okay with everything that they wrote in this letter?
That's correct.
Okay, including the flagmen?
Say again, sorry?
Including the flagmen.
Two flagmen shall be present.
Two flagmen shall be present every time there's a vehicle parked or?
Says deliveries.
Right. Any type of delivery?
Oh, any, was it any type? Sorry, I said, could you?
Yes. Two flagmen shall be present for all deliveries which block any portion of Coronado Avenue.
So if you're blocking the whole street?
Yeah.
Any portion.
If you're blocking half the street.
Okay.
Okay? Because that was a condition that was put on 151. And one of the reasons that that was put on was simply because there were emergency vehicles that potentially needed to get through there.
Correct.
And so there needed to be flagmen because of the curve of the street and visibility issues. That was one of the reasons that we included that requirement on 151 Coronado. So in order to be consistent, that, I think, is one of the reasons that that's been included in that letter. And so you're okay with Monday through Friday, nine to four for the dirt hauling?
That's correct.
And are you, you're okay with the construction hours, Monday through Friday, eight to six, weekends inside?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make absolutely certain that you've seen all of this.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to invite members of the public to come up and speak. I do not have any speaker cards in front of me, however. Oh, so yes, let's go ahead and bring those on up. Thank you. Okay, so first to speak is Robert, and I'm sorry, I'm going to mispronounce your last name, Andrew Ghetto?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Let's see, I just, I was curious on the heights. They go by above sea level, is that correct?
Above grade level, can you clarify, staff?
Yeah. I live up above on Elston, right behind the house here, so this would be my house on the right up on top.
I see. Yeah, from what we had just ascertained, it looks like the grading, the 28 feet starts right in that middle line there. Am I correct?
Maybe if I ask Gavin to confirm that, or if the applicant confirmed those measurements there, they're a little bit difficult to read on the screen, so we'll just confirm.
Basically, he's asking where the 28 feet are measured from, and they said from grade, and I guess the only question is where's grade?
Well, my, the foundation of my house sits at 440, 440 feet, and the roof on this one here shows 453 feet. And according to that drawing there, it's below my foundation there. So the pictures that you have there and the numbers that you have here, they just, they don't seem to add up for some reason, you know. I just, next door, the house that was just, that they're building right now, his roofline is at 421 feet. So 453 feet, I understand there's a little slope upward, but it's not 30 feet slope upward, it's just two houses down. So mine's a one-level house here. I've been here for 20 years, and to put a, you know, if there's any mistakes made that the house goes in, I lose better part of the value of my house, plus I lose the views we've always had. I don't have any problem with anybody building, but I just, you know, we need to make sure that what we're getting is accuracy. So if we could put up some height poles or something I could look at, just to make sure that something is, that everything's in order, that's my main concern, is just the heights on it.
The accuracy.
Yeah.
Great. I think after, there might be some other comments on that, so Gavin, do you want to address that after the public has spoken?
Yeah, I can address it after, and I also might ask the engineers here to explain which are the choice levels he used for the starting point. But I know that those are elevations to show relative elevation, so they should be similar from house to house. The grade question, the 28-foot, that is, as we discussed, measured off the house within five feet of the exterior walls of the home. But I think what Mr. Andrew Ghetto is getting at is the actual elevations that you see, the 453, 423, those measurements.
Great, thank you. I'll invite the engineer up after we've heard from the rest of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Alexander Chernukin. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Alex. My name is Alexander Chernukin, and I'm a resident, not resident, I am owner of the property 151 Coronado.
Okay.
Which is currently under construction to the right. If you face this property, my property will be to the right. And the only point I want to bring is possible obstruction of view of that building. And I think that was a legitimate and reasonable question to show the impact on my property by the owner on 147 Coronado. And I haven't seen anything to show me that there will not be impact or any significant impact. Because if there is significant impact, then I would oppose.
Right.
And I think I have a right to see how my property will be affected. For the record, back to the history, when two years ago, we were going through approval of our plans, 151 Coronado, our neighbors expressed concern about view and shadow, solar blockage. So what we did actually was city recommended, and we did it. We hired our architect, and he conducted two studies, solar study or shadow study and view study. And those studies showed that there was, there would not be negative impact on neighbors. So the same thing I wanted to show me because I am a potential person who would get affected, and I would not, I didn't see any communication from the owner of 147. And I even don't know, should I complain or not? Looks like, if I look at the elevations, my roof will be 1421, and that roof is 450-plus. So it looks like I will be looking at the cement wall to the right. What we did, my wife and I, we voluntarily decreased elevation, height of our roof from 28 feet allowed by the city, a couple of feet lower or so, so that we are not obstructing any views and actually answer all the concerns of our neighbors, which I don't see from, cannot see from 147 Coronado. My question is, I still do not know, and if anybody able to answer me, how my view will be impacted, if any.
Thank you. And what I'd like to do is, after we've heard our last speaker for public comment, I'm hoping that maybe those pictures might be able to give you a little bit more of an example of how your view will be affected, because I think that's an important question. Am I correct in stating that? Yes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I believe that was the intent of this particular diagram here, and if it's the pleasure of the commission to invite the architect to speak directly to that, using this diagram here, that may be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
So can, maybe I can shed a little bit of light on this because I was actually here for 151. So the concern with 151 was, foreshadowing was, I believe, brought by the resident who lives across the street and down the slope.
Right.
And he was concerned that the building, your home, would shadow his, and, and there was determined that it would not affect that at all. I don't think that there's been any question here with this particular property that it would shadow the house across the street. And then the second question that you sort of brought up was the idea of whether you're going to be able to see the neighbor there, their building next door. And I think that, looking at the landscaping that has been provided, I think that if, I just want to double-check and look at it, but my impression is that the landscaping that they're going to put in will actually address your view of the side of their house, that that can be taken care of through landscaping. And I'm not sure that we can do anything more than that.
From my understanding of the drawings as well, and again, this is why I invite you and the architect to speak and go through the pictures. you and the architect to speak and go through the pictures, when I looked directly at the picture, it looked to me like there was only a very, very small portion of the back of the house because of the angle of the new house that you, that you would actually see, but I don't want to state that exactly, because I definitely want you to see the pictures and determine if that's, if that indeed is the case and satisfactory. And thank you very much for your comments, and I do invite the two of you to speak.
One more, I have one more question. I'm trying to understand, isn't your view down the hill? Isn't this house, like, up the hill from you?
Well, with the height of the roof, and I don't know, maybe it's not a problem at all. But if I look at the diagram, I see that, I look at the elevations, and I see that it could block a portion of the bay I could see.
But I mean, your view, I mean, isn't your view, I mean, you're facing down, the front of your house faces downhill, right? So, your view is actually straight out in front of you, and possibly to the left.
And to the right.
To the right.
Yes. Samteal Bridge.
Really? You can see the Samteal Bridge from your lot?
Yes. Unless this roof blocks my view.
Well, I.
I do not know.
Well, thank you for your comments, and I agree, I think that if you guys can, right after I hear my last public comment, if you guys could speak, I think that would answer a lot of questions. Thank you very much. I have my final speaker request for Roel Peters.
Good evening. My name is Roel Peters, I am the owner and resident of 152 Coronado. Great memory, Commissioner Masters on all the issues that we dealt with several years ago. I actually wanted to speak out and actually compliment Samir on the way he has been collaborating with the neighborhood. The current ordinance that he can build under in our neighborhood is basically very loose, if you will, which, as Gavin know, very much upset me when I learned about that, because of the fact that it's so tight, such a small neighborhood, such, so close together, construction was not allowed over the weekends, there really was, it was much, much more loose than, and you know, the issues that we have, I'm not going to belabor the points here, they're on record from two years ago. And the same issue still applied, the street hasn't become more white, and the street hasn't become better condition, and we only have more kids in the neighborhood now. So, I really appreciate Samir to accommodate these more restrictive, restrictive hours and restrictions for his project, knowing that these lots are going to be built upon. So, I just want to say, I appreciate that, and that's at least off to a good start. There's other examples in the neighborhood which are not that complimentary, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other speaker cards, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion, but at this point, I'd like to follow up on some public comment and see if any of the commissioners had any follow-up for, for staff or for questions at this point. I do have one, if nobody else does.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. One question for staff, Gavin, you gave me an excellent, you gave me an excellent visual before on how 151 would be impacted, you put a white piece of paper over, I'm wondering if you could do the same for the commissioners to show what the view impact would be to 151.
I'm going to speak loudly, I think the microphone probably not going to reach. So, this is the proposed house here, I know that, let me pick this up, this, the dark is the proposed house, 147, this is the house that's under construction, 151, can you see it? I need to get closer, okay, because this is a little bit light. The previous approval, we approved this house basically a foot from the property line, I think it might be 18 inches, and this is a two-story garage unit, so it was right on the, right on the property line. In this case, the house is back, they're not using the full, they're actually using, I think it's about nine feet here and 13 or 16, I've got to get the plans out to tell you the exact number, the garage is back quite a bit further, and then the house is back further from that. So, if, what I was showing, Chair Harper-Petersen, is that if you put a line across the front of the house here, or the line across the front of this house here, you can see that the majority of the views, this actually has a deck and quite a few windows here, this has decks here, a deck here, and the windows for this home, the one that's under construction, really are out the front, a little bit on the sides, and a little bit off of this side here. So, they're seeing out this way, down this way, and then out this way. And when you look at the way, if you look at, say, that this home was 100% of an impact, the house at 151 Coronado is proud of it, it's out closer to the street by quite a bit. So, the majority of the home, and I'm sorry if it's a little crooked, but the majority of the home is in front of the proposal that's in front of you tonight.
Great. That helps me visually, so, thank you.
So, which side of this diagram would be the Samteal Bridge that he's talking about? Which side of?
So, this way, and these pictures are representative of the direction, so, this is the picture which you see if you looked out of the property this way. Looking out this way, you see the western hills, we call them western hills, houses and hills, basically. The views out towards the bay would be to the right and kind of down, but they're at a lateral angle, they're not a direct view out of the house.
So, it's that middle one on the left? That one?
Yes.
Okay.
Scott, did you have a follow-up?
I was just going to suggest that you show that to the gentlemen in the audience when you get a chance.
Great.
I'll leave it out so they can.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Gavin. Does anybody have any other follow-up questions for staff at this point? Okay, seeing none, comments, deliberation?
There was that issue about this being at 454, and the neighbor indicating that his, that his, his property was at 441 or something? So, that this would be 13 inches, 13 feet?
Yeah.
421.
No, no, 421 was the height of 451.
Oh.
But the house behind it was apparently at 441.
Base of Elston was at 440?
And that, and looking at C3, I think he's looking at C3 and thinking that, that the top of the house is at 454. I wasn't actually sure whether it was at 454 or 441, but maybe the applicant can answer that question.
Oh, thank you.
I'm not exactly sure where the various numbers are coming from. Based on the survey that we have, the, the, there's a little arrow here, sorry, the shot topography above sea level of this, right there on this lot, is 460. And I'm quite certain that this house does not sit below the crest of that on a hill by 20 feet, so I can't say whether his numbers are valid or our numbers are valid, what I can say is that, relatively speaking, the diagram is accurate. So, whether the topography is off by a couple of feet above sea level based on his survey or based on my survey, what I, what I do know is, that's how steep the hill is, his house sits on top of it, and we're down in it. So, that's, that's all I can guarantee. And like I said, I'm not sure where he got the finished floor level for the house.
I'd just like to also make one point about the, the line of sight. I have a photo here, diagramming exactly how the fence looks sitting on our property, and the slope, if you visit, since the continuing upwards slope. With about a six-foot, or seven-foot fence with a little bit of, you know, landscaping on top of it, it's, you would have to go up to that fence, you know, the top of the house, you're still only going to see the top of our house.
When you go to haul the dirt away, I mean, you're, you're going from sea level, so, so how do we know, I mean, how do we know that you aren't going to be at that 450, that you aren't going to be affecting his if you're going at sea level instead of, you're measuring from the top and going down here, but you're going to be actually pulling the grade from the bottom and going up?
Actually, we're, I mean, it's going to be relative to the street.
Okay.
So, we're not going to, you know, they're not going to go down, they're not going to go up, it'll be relative to the street below how the grading and the formwork gets set, and so, it'll sit in the hill as depicted based on, you can see the topography on the site plan sheet, it's right after the landscape, and you can see the grading on there, and the, and on the amount of grade differential from the front of the property at 400 to the back of the property at 460.
So, what you were trying to say is that looking, that basically, you're showing the fence there that's at the end?
What I was, the point I was trying to make is that I've been, obviously, this said many a times, and this is already upward sloping, and I'm guessing the gentleman purchased that piece was to have a nice, a little bit flatter backyard area. And so, this thing doesn't even start flattening out till after you get to the fence line. And then, behind that is the home. So, it'd be, you'd have to be like a 12-foot tall person to be able to look over that fence, and then, only then, you'd only still see roof, you see some backyard, and then you see roof. You would not have any type of structure, nothing obstructing your view at all. Unless, you know, and per that calculation, if we're at 440 and they're at 4, sorry, if we're at 460 and they're at 440, their house should be sunk in almost, and they wouldn't even be able to see out, it'd be like a volcano. It can't be 20 feet, their house can't sit 20 feet below ours.
So, Gavin, is there some condition that we can put in that will sort of rectify this? Because we could sit here and argue and talk about this all night long, but instead, if we just say that, that, you know, the top of the house cannot be more than, I'm, would only be guessing, four feet below the grade at the base of the fence, or something like that. I don't know how to.
That's a good question. One, one way might just be to require an updated current signed wet stamp survey, and then we can compare that survey or, that survey document to what's been approved or could be approved tonight. If there's an error, then the approvals moot, because the, the document would not be an honest document, so we would, we would adjust it at that point. So, that's one, that is one option. The lots are, and I'm looking at the two, because I have the approval documents for 151. 147 does go up and back quite a bit more, if you look at the lines of contour, it's, it is a higher lot, and the house is further back. So, seeing a higher elevation number is, I think, an appropriate finding, just looking, just comparing these reduced size plans at the, at the table here tonight.
And if I could just also add, maybe a third or additional option is to require, like Gavin mentioned, under, under his first option was to require an additional survey be done, and at the time of building permit, a review and approval, and if there's any alteration in what that survey finds, we could bring that back to the planning commission if there's a difference. And this is kind of similar to the standard conditions we apply for every project, which means that the project needs to be in strict conformance with the design review approval, and if not, we can always bring that back, whether that's to the RDRC or to the planning commission, to the decision-making body that granted design review in the first place.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Okay. Any deliberation at this point?
I'd like to, I don't know if we need to deliberate, but I'd like to make sure that that view is protected. However, we need to stipulate it in the conditions, whether that's a survey or not, it just concerns me that there's a, there's such a difference in what one person's reporting and what we're seeing on the, so I'd like to have that reconciled.
So, Shannon, would the updated survey that Gavin suggested be, be appropriate for you to add as a condition?
Yeah, I'd like to see that, but I'm not sure what, what exactly is that survey going to give us? What, is it going to show us exactly what's it measuring specifically? It's going to give us the, the information we need?
Yeah, in this case, you'd be, you would be approving the home tonight based at, based on the proposal that you see with the information that you have with the disclaimer that the survey would have to confirm that the points of the house, its roof height, finished floor, garage floor, each of the levels are where they actually say they are.
Okay.
Because in that case, I mean, in this particular situation, we only have the restrictions of height. If the house, if the survey, if, if you wanted to keep a house 30 feet shorter, say, you'd have a house that was two feet underground. So, in this case, we can only review the house based on the plans that they've provided to us in that particular location on that lot, and I think having a survey confirm it would be a good next step.
Okay. Great. So, that would be a condition, okay. I also think altering the construction hours to reflect what, what the applicant and what the neighbor agreed to would be appropriate.
Yep.
Any other, any other conditions or discussion or deliberation?
Want me to take a stab at a motion?
I would love it.
Okay. I move that the planning commission approve the request for design review for the construction of a new home at 147 Coronado Avenue, based on the findings and for, and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and as conditioned in the code compliance certificates with the following additional conditions to be applied. The first is number 19, requiring a new survey, and if the new, if there is a significant change from the old survey, it would be required to be brought back to the planning commission. And condition 20, which will reflect the paragraph from Roel, which says that the dirt hauling hours shall be from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. on weekdays. No excavation or dirt hauling is permitted on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays. Deliveries of concrete and materials to the site shall be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Two flagmen shall be present for all deliveries which block any portion of Coronado Avenue. Passage for one vehicle around all delivery trucks shall be maintained at all times, and due to the close proximity to existing residents, construction hours shall be limited from 8:00 p, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. No construction activities except for interior finishing shall be permitted on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays.
May I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is 775 Industrial Road, which I understand is to be continued to a date uncertain, and can I get an update from staff on that?
Yes, Madam Chair, the item C on your agenda, 775 Industrial Road, is consideration of a mitigated negative declaration, design review, and associated grading and dirt haul approval, a signed plan, and a variance, and a conditional use permit, I think this is, has almost every kind of permit you can think of. But this is for an application for a new automobile sales and repair facility located at 775 Industrial. This project did require a degree of environmental analysis pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act in the form of an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. When staff, when the division circulated the mitigated negative declaration, it was anticipated at the time that the planning commission will hold a public hearing on November 4th, so because that document had been circulated, we needed to include it on tonight's agenda, but we have heard from the applicant that they have requested us to postpone the public hearing because they are still working out a couple additional items on their project, so they want to make sure that they have shored those up, and then we can come back and consider this item. So, at this point, we don't know when the applicant would be ready, so it would be a continuance to a public hearing to a date uncertain at this time.
Great. And we would go ahead and make a motion to that effect.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion?
Move to continue the matter of 775 Industrial Road to a date uncertain.
A second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, and next item on our agenda are reports, correspondence, and general information, and item A, report on city, on recent city council actions.
Nothing at this point, thank you.
You're not going to tell us about story polls? You're not going to tell us about four-story story polls? I want to hear about four-story story polls.
Sounds like you already know.
Hey, it sounds like, sorry, he wasn't doing his dishes in front of the.
Listen, update on the findings or ethics changes?
Those, thank you for reminding me, Commissioner Bergman, the city council, a couple council hearings passed, had updated some of the, their standards for ethics, and I've, since we last met, I now have a copy of the final version, and I'll make sure to bring those to the commission, or actually, I think I can just email those out as informational item to the commission, I'll do that instead. So, you'll have a copy of those.
Thank you.
Do we know when the Transit Village is going to go back to the city council?
Yeah, it'll go this coming Monday, the 12th. So, they did have their study session and open the public comment period, and took a lot of public comment. It's actually Tuesday, the 12th. So the, they'll be having a public hearing that evening, and, so we'll see how it goes.
Great, thank you. Planning Commission comments or reports? Anybody? No? Okay, correspondence?
None.
Great. Planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
This is where I was going to let you know about the Transit Village project, and Al had already mentioned that. So coming up next Monday, just to keep everyone on the same page, is the continued item for the Transit Village. And in addition to that, that'll be the first, November 12th will also, will be the first reading of the proposed sign ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission recently looked at and made a recommendation on. For the November 8th Planning Commission hearing, we are, of course, going to be bringing back 934 Laurel with a corrected public notice, noticing mail-out. We also have on our, penciled in on our agenda to bring forward the proposed billboard by Clear Channel that's located at the end of Branston Road in the industrial district. And then, I've mentioned this far too many times, but I'll mention it again, we are processing a Mills Act contract, and that would have been on tonight's agenda, except we're working out some additional agreement language for the contract. And I needed to get some additional information from the county tax assessor's office that I had hoped to have, but I didn't make it in time. So we'll definitely have that for November the 18th. So at this point, we have those three items coming back to the Commission.
Great. Thank you very much, Lisa. Okay, well, at this point, unless-
And Clear Channel.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'd like to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at whatever time it is, 8:10. Thank you, everybody.